Good morning, everybody. This is OMC regular meeting, agenda, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. As our tradition and custom, we always start with prayers. I'll say it this time. I want to come today. It's a, it's a, well, kind of, kind of, you can say, I'm sorry, I'm stopping. You're there, they are the, I see you, they are the, what you are doing. That, 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 so the, well, well, kind of, well, kind of, you can't keep. That can't say hello, well, kind of, they. You, you can say, no, no, you can say, they, they were, no, they're, what you are, you come, but they're, they're, what you are. Thank you, Father, for this beautiful day. Thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us, our people, Father, our mineral estate, Father, all the, all the, all the things that you've granted us over the, over the last one hundred and some years, even farther back than that, Father. Bless our children, Father, bless our grandchildren, Father, bless all the resters here, Father, bless our travels, give us strength today and the days to come. And the very important item, the very important matter, very important appointments that we have in the future, Father, ask you to look down upon us, Father. Give us strength and give us that insight and the mind, the mindset to deal with the problems of our people, the, the things that we have to do, the important items that we have to talk about. Yeah, I got Shannon, well, kind of, well, kind of, you can keep it, that gives you the way, way, you know, well, kind of, you can keep it. Amen. This was the, the office, this was the receipt of those agents, Indians, March twenty twenty five. Samuel R. Kirk, February twenty four, twenty twenty five, Alaska, Oklahoma. Charlie, yeah, also, on stock, February fifth, twenty twenty five, Houston, Texas. Carolyn, Elton, December fifteenth, twenty twenty four, Barnesville, Oklahoma. Gregory Woodell, March fifth, twenty twenty five, Rogers, Arkansas. Jonathan Ian Harrison, February sixteen, twenty twenty five, living, Oklahoma. Rita M. Littner, December thirty first, twenty twenty four, Oklahoma. Credit Ace Burrow, December twenty first, twenty twenty four, also, Oklahoma. All of them, by the rest of peace. The, uh, what's going on, it's on the money channel this morning, the oil price was sixty one dollars a barrel, it's twenty nine, nine X price in New York, and our price is around fifty nine, fifty years, fifty nine, that's way up. Rocco.
Councilman Bayford.
Here.
Second Chair, Tishawala.
Present.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Here.
Councilman Redcorn.
Here.
Chairman Red Eagle.
Here.
Councilman Rebar.
Present.
Councilman Chappert.
Here.
Councilman Waller.
Present.
We are informed.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Glad to see you, Superintendent, good morning. And you have a flow.
Like to read into the record, the superintendent's report for April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. For oil and gas and water royalty, February two thousand and twenty five production. For total oil produced, two hundred and sixty two thousand eighty nine point five three barrels. The royalties paid was two million seven hundred seventy three thousand three hundred and five dollars and thirty five cents. The total gas produced, one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty MCFs, and the royalties paid was sixty thousand five hundred thirty three dollars and sixty four, uh, sixty five cents. The total gas liquids produced was one hundred and fifty seven thousand six hundred and forty one gallons, and the royalties paid was twenty six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty one cents. The total, uh, tank bottoms was a hundred, or excuse me, one thousand five hundred and sixty, uh, one thousand five hundred and seventy six point nine nine barrels, and the royalties paid was, uh, four thousand five hundred and ten dollars and thirty four cents. For water usage royalty paid was a hundred and fifty dollars, there was no waste disposal royalty collected. For royalty, for rentals and bonuses, for oil and gas rentals paid, three thousand six hundred and sixty five dollars and twenty eight cents. For oil and gas bonuses, there was zero collected. For rentals, there was two thousand dollars rented for saltwater easement rental. There was three thousand dollars collected for late, uh, penalty, or late payment charge, and it was five hundred eighty three dollars and twenty cents, uh, received. Other minerals, APAC produced nine thousand seven hundred eighty seven point one five tons, and paid twelve thousand, uh, forty seven dollars and ninety eight cents royalties. February, Candy Creek Crusher, uh, produced seven thousand seven hundred and seventy one point four six tons, and paid nine thousand six hundred thirty six dollars and sixty one cents in royalties from January. Burbank material produced sixteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen point four one tons, and paid twenty one thousand five hundred twenty two dollars and forty four cents in royalties for January. Wilson Ranch produced two hundred and sixty seven tons, and paid a hundred and thirty three dollars and fifty cents in royalties for February. Rocky Banks produced three hundred and sixty cubic yards, and paid two hundred and seventy dollars in royalties for January. Schmidt Brothers produced zero yard, cubic yards, and paid zero in royalties. Uh, for wells capable of production, or producing wells, sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty four wells, uh, which is total, those are the ones that aren't necessarily producing, but are capable of production, uh, of those. For oil, there was eleven thousand nine hundred and forty three, uh, one thousand three hundred and forty nine were gas, five were gas with easement. There were a hundred and fourteen combination oil and gas wells, there was four hundred and ninety two, there were TA, uh, seventy two were CO2 injection, fifty one were water and gas injection, a hundred and thirty were saltwater with easement. Nine hundred and forty two were saltwater disposal without easement. There was one thousand two hundred and four fifty two, which were for injection, there were eight that were injection with easement. Uh, there was on two waters supply wells, and two that were waters supply wells with easements. For the approved permits, there were three workover permits approved, eight plugging permits approved, one emergency plug permit approved, and then no emergency workover permits, and zero, uh, drilling permits, and there were no new drilling, uh, completion reports submitted, and that completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Sergeant.
Yeah, I've got a question on the total tank bottoms, royalties paid. Were the trucking companies just kind of like catching up and sending in, uh, some of their reports to you, because that's an awfully high amount for tank bottoms.
Our team started auditing some of those, and there were a number of variances that were noticed that we're catching up on, and.
Okay.
And we'll be continuing to.
Yeah, okay, that explains that then, because I'm like, whoa, because usually, that's just usually in the hundreds or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Captain Regal.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Morning, Superintendent. I noticed the, uh, the oil produced was down about forty six thousand barrels from last month. That's about sixteen hundred barrels a day for the month of February. Is there, uh, sometimes maybe one person will get their barrels turned in on a given month, and maybe caught up on the next month, is that, you think maybe that occurred in this case?
Yeah, I'd have to pull the, I'd have to pull the data on it. This was that month I was out, so I'm not entirely sure what trend, what occurred in February, because I was present at the agency. My suspicion is that either one of two things occurred, either that, um, as you're saying, some of them have just been, the reports are going to carry on to the next one, um, or there, there was some other anomaly may have occurred, but, you know, I'm not privy to.
You know, it'd be helpful, uh, if, if we were advised of that, maybe, uh, because one month will be, when the floodways happen, that's probably what happened. That'd be nice if, if maybe you could indicate that. And Chairman, I have a couple of other questions.
Go ahead.
The, uh, I noticed that there was zero, uh, revenue from the waste disposal well, if that's over at Barnesdale, you can use center of plant. Do you know, is that, is there a well not in operation again, do you know?
I can, I can follow up on that. I haven't heard them spending operations, so it may just be later supporting on that one, but I'll inquire. I can certainly send an email to the Chairman and.
Okay, and finally, I noticed, uh, the plugging permits, there were eight approved, all of them are captured point, I believe. I was just curious, uh, with the nation's plugging program, uh, I would have thought there might be one or two approved for the Osage Nation well plugging program. Do they, uh, do they have any, any pending permits submitted to you all?
No, we have considerable number of them that we're getting caught up on now, um.
What, what is considerable?
Like, I don't know the exact number.
Like dozens, or?
It's probably fifty plus.
Yeah. Were they, were they have submitted all the paperwork, and you're all processing it?
Correct, yeah, everything's a process, and we work with them to try and streamline the process as much as possible since I did back, and we've got a number of them, and back to them, and there should be another batch going back to them for, for, uh, plugging in the near future.
It's my understanding that they've plugged about twenty five or twenty eight wells, something like that, does that sound?
Ballpark, yeah.
Have they, have they come across any that they deem to be potential, uh, for commercial production?
It's none that would have been brought to our attention, I think they're coordinating with your guys' geologist, um, so if there's any that they've communicated to him, that would be on your guys' side, but there's none that, they bring to our attention to say, prime, there's none that's been brought to my attention to say.
Because, you know, when we, when we plugged eighty six wells under, uh, the United States of the Congressional Fundy, and we came up with dozens of keepers, what we call keepers.
Yep.
Uh, and it would really surprise me if sometime soon, you know, come up with one or two that probably capable of production, and maybe they all set aside. But, uh, anyway, Chairman, that's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a closing comment, Chairman, but just on that list alone, I'm kind of trying to, no sides here, but on that element, we did look at the list before you all took it.
Yeah.
And I think those were set aside, but I do think there's a relevance to the question itself, and with that being said, how many did you plug last month?
Last month? We plugged three wells the last two months.
Yes, sir.
So at least we're, we're moving.
We're moving, and we're actually plugging a well right now, and, uh, you know, out of the scene, they, they emailed us yesterday, we were on field to result, and we received some, five more potential, uh, emergency candidates.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you all, thank you, Chairman.
Captain Redcorn.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, I, the comment, Councilman Rebar said, we did find a lot of, I said a lot, we found keepers, because that was the flavor of the program when we set it up. To, we looked for plug or produce, and then we would go through the list, this is the minerals council. Our own group, and then we plugged eighty six wells, and we found our own money going to Washington and asking for, Mr. Riley Wilson set up those meetings. So, uh, you know, I, I think, excuse me, the way we set the program up was, was our ability to look at all those wells and those locations, and it educated our whole team to what the status of our reservation is as far as the condition of our wells out there, so it was a good exercise. Just to let you know, we did apply for that grant also. We were turned down. Said, well, let's just, uh, move on, uh, but, you know, I'm not sure, you know, I chatted with some of the council, I mean, we can't be plugging good locations. I was, I liked the way we did it, and I like what you said there, Mr. Rebar, we did fine, and started the rest, and what we're going to do with it is get them out the door, get them produced again. So, uh, that's where we are today, Chairman. I don't know how the conversation is going between us and the nation as far as the value of, in my view, the share, Osage hetero holder's asset, that's their asset, sitting out there. We got it protected, and we got it, we got it, we got it produced. So, it's getting tougher, but I think we're ready for the past, but, you know, I just want to say that much, yeah, I got Shannon.
Chairman, I have another question.
Captain Rebar.
Thank you, Chairman. Curious to know what you're doing with the equipment that you're taking off of these orphan abandoned wells. If the leases had been terminated, uh, I believe the procedure would be to offer it to the surface owner first. If it, the lease was canceled, it would belong to this body here, the minerals council, and I just wondering, uh, how many, how many of the wells have been plugged on terminated leases versus canceled leases?
I'd defer to the orphan well team on their, on their procedure.
I think they've all been terminated, we really haven't seen any canceled leases on the twenty seven that we've done.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and every well, the first round of use of the equipment tubing goes to the landowner, and, uh, they have ninety days to get it off location. Unless they. And then, and then at the end of the ninety days, they don't want it. If they don't want it, we'll send it to whether the trium yard or rainbow yard for, uh, inventorying, and we get the inventory to procurement, and they organize it into editing process. So you're using the rainbow yard that we found and financed, you're using that? Yes. Oh, are you? Well, we told the nation. What? Finance that. No, the nation didn't have any financing to do with it.
I wouldn't answer that.
But anyway, I, that's, uh, so I would think that out of, out of the thousands of wells that are out there, that there'll be some that will be as a result of a canceled lease versus a terminated lease, and if that's the case, the equipment would belong to us, and it would be interesting, I guess somebody would report it to us and let us know where our equipment is, and, uh, I guess make arrangements of how we would, what we'd do with it versus separate it from the nation, from the surface owner's equipment. What happens, let me ask you this, uh, Chairman, if, uh, what if the surface owner, what if it's just junk material? And tanks that's got the bottoms out of it, that kind of stuff, certainly the surface owner would want it, do you all go to the expense to, to truck that to a yard, or, or do you scrap it, or? If it is unusable and junk, some surface owners will take it and have a junker come and cut it up and dispose it themselves, and they'll get small amounts of ash for it, it's not much, it's the weight of the steel and salvage, but most of the time, they will take the tubing, and that's kind of it, uh, and we'll just do everything else. If it's, if it's junk, it just goes to the disposal. These are, uh, and I don't mean to harp on this, but it's just some things that come to mind, liability, if the surface owner was to assume the, and say, I want to claim that they, they, and within that ninety day window, they claim ownership of, uh, is there liability documents you have them side off on, saying that they assume all liability, or somebody gets hurt? Handling it? That is transfer ownership, yes. Right, that's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, there's some, uh, I drive by the yard almost time, this is just a little yard, there's a pipe deck in there, and there's some other pipe, I don't know what kind of pipe, there's some extra pipe in there.
A little tuning, it's, a lot of it's not very good, I mean, it's like, you guys, I could, it's so corroded, I could bend it and have, just, you know, put my hands.
I was in the yard.
Captain Redcorn. I believe the yard was purchased with the three million we got from, we went to DC and got an allocation to plug wells, and that was part of our purchase, so shareholders actually bought that, that pipe yard. So that's kind of how that got into existence, and as soon as we started, it got in a tug of war of who's supposed to run it, this and that, and just decided, at least tallie, as a councilman decided, well, just let things roll as they may, but one thing I felt one, if they're doing things to cover up value for a shareholder, they're, hey, Osage hetero, we need to maybe take a second look at it, have a conversation, what does that look like? I mean, but that, that yard was, is supposed to be ours, and, uh.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing I want to say is, um, when we set up this whole process, uh, there was a pro bono, and Osage reservoir engineer was also looking at our locations. We had power tools coming out of our geologists and that work, and his crew was doing that, and then it would slide over to the reservoir engineer, and so there was a full-blown assessment going on, at least when we had it. If, if these two coupled together thought there was oil still down, and I'm not, I guess I would ask, is that happening still?
Yes, we have a geology team, but, um, the thing that we're looking at isn't so much the oil around, but it's the condition of the well. The casing has, the casing's got holes, if there's one hole, there's a hundred holes, the tubing's no good, we can't, we don't have integrity, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think I got a question, I think we've got a lot of guys running around that understand what pipe and all the equipment looks like. What I'm asking is, downhole, in the geology, in the layer, is somebody assessing that and determining there's still value down there before we plug this thing off?
There is, but, and our end in coordination was built, we're looking at that, but there's, even if there is value down there, the well itself wouldn't be capable of sustaining production.
I, I think we want somebody, I mean, if there's value down there, we don't want field people making that determination, we want, you know, that's what we had when we, we had a geologist, several senior geologists, and reservoir engineers making that assessment, that's just a question. I'm not picking on the process, but I like, I like what, uh, Councilman Rebar said, is, is, are we plugging things that there's value down there? And this has been a long conversation, twenty, thirty years, I think that's kind of how we inherited the, the work of well program. But, uh, we're in, we're in the bottom end, I said back end of the decline curve.
Very, yes.
In this whole reservation.
Yes.
So we got to get really, really aggressive and try to bite into that side of that decline curve and pull more oil out of the ground and do it well, so I, I, I'm, I'm starting to ask questions, Chairman, and just to see, you know, what's going on there, thank you, Chairman.
Just to follow up on, uh, thank you, Chairman, to follow up on Councilman Redcorn's comment about, uh, the potential commercial oil or gas production. If you did find, come across a well that looked like it might be productive, but because of the condition of the casing, collapse casing or what have you, stuck tubing in the well, accidentally cemented in tubing, those kind of things, or some of the reasons why a well would have gotten abandoned in the first place, are you keeping a notation of those kind of things? Where if somebody was to nominate that track that this well's on for an upcoming lease sale, and would, would there be a well record in that, that quarter section file that would have a report as to the procedure of the plugging? Not, you know, the one thirty nine, of course, where the sacks of cement were and all that, but would there be notations that this is what happened? Uh, it was, uh, flowing, oil, gas, uh, those kind of notations, would that be in a file for somebody to look at if they were to, uh, not, not, not for reentry purposes, but just to know that that well probably was capable of production, had it not been for that circumstance that I just made? Thank you, Chairman.
Captain Red. Captain Red, I mean, earlier you mentioned, uh, you know, the industry land has been in contact with the well plugging program from the conception of it, but today I will do it. Whenever you go out there and you're identifying certain wells for plugging purposes and such, and talk about the integrity of the well itself, and tubing, and certain things like that, and, and the final determination for us, as Mr. Redcorn mentioned, is the fact that whether or not there's a possibility of it being a productive well. Is there any kind of, uh, back and forth with Mr. Lindsay, you know, hey, Bill, we looked at the well today, and we'd like for you to come out and check it out, and just for the sake of satisfying some of these questions that minerals council seem to be concerned with, has any, any of that been going on?
Uh, there is, but we have not had one bringing up.
Not one.
Not, not one yet, every well we've gone in on has had an issue, can't exist downhole, I mean, that's the reason that it's an orphan. But what we have been working a bill to do is identify, you know, if we have an empty quarter section or a quarter section with fifteen orphans on there, with no production, we've identified which wells we can plug, so we're just, we're trying to clean up our leases by giving these orphans. And, you know, we're adding value by removing liabilities, and if we didn't get a lease that's clean and good with a few working well boards, we can sell that, I mean, we can promote that and sell that outside, or if somebody wants to produce it, it'd be, that's, that's our ultimate goal, is to clean up leases that somebody.
That, I mean, that's kind of the catch twenty two, is it comes, I mean, line of sight, you know, like Mr. Redmond mentioned, whenever you go downhole to the layers, I mean, it's, it's tough, like you're saying, like determination, whether or not, is there a route you could go about, what would it take to find, to satisfy the curiosity or the duty responsibility to determine if, if anything's worth chasing at that point?
The biggest thing right now is we work with Adam to start off a submit on line program on these wells, before we put the rig on, before we start plugging, we go check if we can get to bottom of the well, and then we run a log to see what the addition of the submit behind the well, the casing, uh, you know, we've, we've had a discussion with a solicitor about pressure testing wells to see if they hold integrity. That's still going on, and we're told not to right now, because these wells don't have an operator, if we get into it and it kicks off and starts flowing, we have to be prepared to handle that, and they, they, it was being, we're given guidance not to get into a well before we have a permit, which is unfortunate, because we really don't know what's downhole until we go in the well, whether it's a log or just a wireline tool to check TV. So it's, we have this information that we have historic records in the BIA, I think we've had two out of the twenty seven that have actually matched up to those records, so it's, 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 it's unknown until we go downhole and, you know, go with the log, that's our.
Stick a wireline out there.
And if we find it good, yeah, we can pull off and move on, and if we have another well to go to, we would, I mean, we, we've done that, we've run across it, uh, casing this part and shifted over, and we can't get anywhere, we could move off and stop and talk to the, the BIA's engineer and coordinate bill and whatever we need to, and whether or not we come back and plug or not, have to be.
Friend, one more question, on that kind of deal, whenever you have private land that's owned by Osages.
Yes.
How, how does that criteria priority, which wells, I mean, I understand there's certain ones that are, what's the identified factor on whether or not, if you have two leases that are simultaneous and needing plug, and one of them's on Osage land and one of them's not, how do you determine which one gets the, the, the relation line firmship, what's the, yeah?
We prefer Osage land, we, we, that's what we would prioritize on our end, but we'll turn in a tranche to, to add to the BIA, and it's just, sometimes it comes back, we get two of those wells, or sometimes, it just, it varies on what we get, time to us. So it, it's kind of, whatever permit we get, if it, if it's still good to go, we will blow it out regardless of where it is. The way we submit our work is we prefer to clean up the ranch and Osage land first.
So that's, the ranch has been given the priority so far?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our, the ranch and all the Osage owned properties more disappeared, uh.
Great, great.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, thank you, sir, good to see you, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is Bureau of Trust Fund Administration, of course, Garringer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, George, let us be here today. Again, my name is Troy, and my last name is Garringer, I'm the Bureau of Trust Fund Administration fiduciary trust officer, and today we have Stephanie Davis with us, she's our trust accounts administrator. We're located here in this building, um, we're here Monday through Friday, eight to four thirty PM. Our telephone number right now is nine one eight, two eight seven, five seven nine one. Account holders can contact us or come into the office, and we'll assist them with updating their accounts. Right now, we've got a lot of new accounts that are being opened, and so we're trying to research individuals, um, to come in and update their accounts. We're also BTFA nationwide as pilot team program, which will allow tribes to obtain online access to view and download their tribal account statements. So that, um, pilot will end July thirty first, and then they'll go live with that nationwide September thirtieth, so, um, we'll, we'll give whoever is on your tribal authorization form access to that online system. online system. So that's something that Stephanie's going to be working on, is updating the tribal access, um, in the next couple of months. So she'll be contacting Lacy to do that. And then, again, the person that you designate on that authorization form will be trying to have access to online statements. And, and that only affects the tribal accounts. It does not affect individual Indian money accounts.
Any questions, uh, with the council?
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, Lacy, uh, do we still get the quarterly report? Is it in paper, form, in our office? Cause I asked before the Bureau, uh, who's, whose name is on top of that report?
It's Osage Tribe of Indians.
Osage Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma. And, and that had to change since twenty thirty, forty, whatever, how long this report's been. I guess I had him ran out, right out here.
That's there.
Is he? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Who is that? Osage Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma?
I would refer his solicitors on that.
Okay. I, 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 I've asked this question probably six months ago. It'd been in your segment, but I'm a little curious, um, who that is and why hasn't that changed, you know, or is it supposed to change? I think it's, to me, it's apparent who, who the intended people are. And that's, you say head right. This is, this is their trust. This is the money that goes to them. I mean, that's, I'm not seeing why maybe someone else like Governor Stick wants to say it's, I don't know, you know, or the county or some of these ranchers out west. I don't know. But to me, that's the Osage headright holder's asset, trust, held in trust by the United States for the benefit of the Osage headright holders. That's the way I see it. That's what quarterly report. I get two of them. I get one from my mom's people down here. I know moms always give me real bitter.
Quit now, quit.
Same thing, got our name on there on top of that report. The difference is, nobody tells us what to do down there. They don't come and tell us. This is how you want to run your business. It's just a conversation between us as the beneficiary and your, just asking questions. I'm not directing anything different, but I'm asking the BIA, what does that mean? This, sorry to pick you, your segment, but I still have a question. I think it's worth having a conversation about that, Chairman. Thank you. So what's the?
We have an election committee, and we really want, like, the next year's election, make it right, you know? How, how, uh, what communication do you have with the BIA on, on addresses? Is that off limits from, from the election, or do we just deal directly with the BIA?
Normally, the superintendent is tasked with that process for your elections.
Okay. Does he get those addresses from you or from?
Yeah, I'm sure they're uploaded from our system.
Especially if you know, if you didn't know how it worked or anything, but, uh, as every month goes by, we're closer to the election, you know? Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year, next year, August, twenty twenty-six. That's all I, anybody else?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, glad you mentioned that. The, uh, what type of program do you use for that, to provide the names and addresses of the headright owners to the superintendent's office? Is it, is it the Microsoft, uh, program or?
No, I don't.
Is, is it a special proprietary program that you have? The reason I ask is?
I would say it is a proprietary program.
Cause the reason I ask is last, at our last election, these names and addresses were delivered to us in a format that was really burdensome. And took, uh, took the election committee for the election staff, uh, a terrible amount of time to try to decipher it, massage it in such a way it can be usable. So maybe, uh, maybe, maybe we could have them in one of our election committee meetings and, and talk about the format.
Okay. Again, um, Mr. Rebar, our, um, the report is generated by the Osage superintendent, BIA superintendent. So our office, again, when account holders call in and update their information and names, addresses, then that system goes over to their system.
Okay. So but it originates as the BIA, then you don't originate and give it to them?
No.
They have it, give it to you, you, you do changes and you, you provide the updated changes to the BIA and you know it now?
They interface. So if we, if we see changes, they interface.
Okay. Well, then I guess it's actually the superintendent's office that we probably consulted in that format. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in the council? Thank you, Troy.
Have a good day. Thank you.
I don't see anybody from the treasurer. Uh, anybody from the treasurer here?
I'll speak on their, uh, diary on reports to get on that's five ten and three nine five.
It's in your book list, the, uh, the income statement and everything that y'all want to look at, without Clark being here. Y'all want to take a break, or y'all want to go on to new business?
I say keep going.
Okay, alright. Uh, no treasurer here. Uh, number eight and number seven, new business. Data committee, Councilman Redcorn. Thank you, Chairman. Um, I went to our chief of staff a couple of weeks ago, and we were having a lot of conversations with our staff, what's going on with the information that, that we have in the Bureau, and how do we get it out? And I'll say to our customers, to ourselves, uh, a couple of things came out of that conversation after I talked to several people. But I wanted to come to the mineral council and get your thoughts. Uh, the three things are, I'd like to, uh, and I thought, since we did, or I thought we did a good job with the working well program by forming a committee and kind of doing work processes. Uh, we eventually plugged eighty-six wells. Rode Grant, went to DC, Raleigh got us in front of people, and I thought we did a pretty good job. So I thought, let's start up, I would not say maybe so much a data committee, we could call it something when it's appropriate. But the end result is to get that information to the mineral council, and how do we do that? So that's what I'm proposing today, is, uh, we might not even have a resolution, I just want some feedback. But the end result, the end goal is to have our information available for our customers, producers, for ourselves. What's that going to look like? Right now, we've got a lot of, I would say, a little bit of activity going on, but it's not, you know, here's a, here's a grand scheme of what we want to do. So that's what I'm proposing today, is to get feedback from the, uh, mineral council on those three items that I put on the agenda. There's some, you know, step forward that we might need to, to take. Uh, so anyway, that's a quick summary of what I wanted to propose to the mineral council. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Rebar. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Uh, on that same subject, about getting the data out and available to be utilized by, like you mentioned, the, like, the producers or even our shareholders, that might have some information that they would like to see on a regular basis. I, I'd like to have us, uh, consider using our website, the osageminerals.org website or server. I guess it's considered the website, uh, to be, uh, to be used maybe for that purpose. Right now, it's just well data and maps, geological information. But we could, and we've talked to our contractor, who, by the way, I called on April the second, two weeks ago today, uh, and I called twice. In the end, return my call. I was going asking about the feasibility of, and to really to refresh myself of the conversations we've had over the years. Cause if you remember, Osage Mineral Council Four, I worked with, uh, with him and Buffalo Data, the name of his company, a significant amount of, uh, time over the years to develop that. We had regular meetings with him. And he did tell us that he, that it'd be simple enough to have certain part of that website to have credential access for some stuff to go out in public, and then some stuff that we can put that maybe the council could utilize and put maybe just for our shareholders. And they could have access to just that. Or some just among ourselves, another level, with just council members in our staff. So I was hoping to get to talk to Mr. Cooper about that before we met again. But, uh, it's something that I wanted to remind everybody, we have this website, it can be used for that purpose.
Yeah.
So anyway, maybe when I hear back from Mark, uh, we can learn a little bit more about it, and I'll let you know if I do. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody else? Council questions? Councilman Redcorn? Yeah, uh, I appreciate those comments. Uh, when we had the orphaned well, I think, uh, Councilman Rebar and former councilwoman Foreman were on there, and we had invited up tasks to go through the list of wells, the fifteen, sixteen hundred and two. Uh, we were tasked to come back to talk to whomever, geologists, reservoir engineers, come back, what are your thoughts? And, uh, we started developing our, our, uh, our knowledge as far as where we were with orphaned wells and well plugging, how we're going to do it. We eventually came into the conclusion that we want to contract everything, which I thought worked very well. The last thing, we had all the solicitors sitting right here, and we gave them a quick question. The, the tort claims, are the Osages responsible, are shareholders responsible if we plug a well and something happens out there? The quick answer was, blah, blah. Then somebody from DC come in and said, no, the United States is still responsible for all inactions. When that decision was told us, we decided to roll and start plugging wells. All the, I've heard shareholders say this, they want the mineral council to drive the ship on these decisions to produce and, and get this, this reservation moved. And the liability has to be out the door. We cannot operate and be out the door with liabilities on us. So to me, the orphaned well program did that because the liabilities went to the contractors in their contracts, and that was established in their contracts, and it was moved out from the shareholders. So that's how we moved with the orphan well. So I've been kind of pitching to our geologists, let's, let's possibly operate in the field just the same way. Contract, that way the liability's out there, and we're driving the ship, just like I've been told by many shareholders, that's what they want. Because I did bring this, this idea of LLC, nonprofit, all that. They don't, uh, it's clear to me they don't want it. They, they don't trust things, you know, and I get it. I, I gotta roll out something as their representative, something that they like. But to me, the working well kind of proved itself. Well, now we don't want to have it anymore. Somebody took it. So, and we've been, you know, but I'm proud of it. I think we've all done a good job. So it's the same kind of concept. Let's, let's dig our fingers into this data coming out from the BIA. What's all the isms about it? We need to start talking. And I'm proposing as a committee, and if that's okay, Chairman, I'm going to say next month, bam, I'm going to bring it to them. So if you guys got thoughts and all that, please email me, just call me over, let's talk. And then the councilwoman heard and said, I want to be on there. I said, that's fine. So whoever council wants it, and we're, we're going, we met every two weeks, if I remember, and our team came together in the mineral office, in here, and we put steps forward. So that's what I'm proposing, we do that for, I would say data, we might change the name, but the goal is to get that information in whatever format, as Councilman Rebar said, to our customers, to maybe to our shareholders, maybe to just us, but let's make those decisions and let's start moving. Uh, it's not like it hadn't been moving, but we're, I think we've been hitting a lot of barriers here and there. So I think it's, anyway, so next month, if that's all right, Chairman, I'm going to table this, if that's okay with the council, and put it on for next month, our next meeting. Thank you, Chair.
We don't need a resolution for that, do we?
He's going to table it, though.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Next on the new business is the biennial meeting, that's me and your book list, the next section over, the dates there, May fourteenth, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, the next month. I, I, I picked the fourteenth myself, I don't have the open one. Quicker than better.
Fourteenth, okay. Councilman Rebar?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'd like to wait till we get back from Washington to decide. We're going to learn a lot. We're going to have a lot of, uh, there may be some, some issues that come up during our trip or as a result of it, that we may want to, you know, delay and prepare for. Could be, could be that there's not enough time to prepare for a meeting, uh, to meet with them on the fourteenth. If we're going to be, we're just going to be immediately returning back from Washington. I'd like to have some more time to digest what, what happened and what takes place in Washington, so we can prepare ourselves for the biennial meetings. There might be some serious issues that arise, uh, that it'd be helpful to, for us to regroup before we sit down with our trustee. So that's just my thought. I'd like to, and not, not choose the date until after we return from Washington. That's my thought.
Anybody else on there? Other comments on this?
What'd you say?
Any more comments?
No, I, I need to know what your comment was on your suggestion.
We wanted to wait till after we get back from DC.
But I need to know the suggestion you had, the fourteenth and next year.
I, I, I picked the fourteenth. No matter what, no matter what's said or done in D, in DC, we're still going to have it on our mind.
Yeah.
And, and we can go either. I think a lot of it depends on what kind of, like, license.
Yeah. She sent the dates out that she, that they are available?
Yeah.
And if it's not in May, it'll be July.
Okay, well, I think we need to meet with them in May. I mean, it may not be, you know, whatever. But I'd like to meet with her sometime in May, maybe closer to the end. I don't know.
Fourteenth?
Well, I don't know. That could be all in on Christina, Christine's, uh, calendar, would it not?
Fourteenth, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, or thirtieth of May. We're going to be quite busy down south.
Okay.
No, I'm already starting with.
Yeah, the fourteenth sounds better to me.
Yeah.
Fourteenth's on a Wednesday, and it's not the, uh, it's not the council day. It's Wednesday before council.
I don't know. It's, I was fine with that. I don't care.
Uh, okay, so if you're going to do that to fourteenth, that's, I think, five days after we return to Washington, six or four. But anyway, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the, our trustee needs a certain amount of notice for our agenda. How much in advance of that meeting do we have to provide them in an agenda?
Um, it's thirty days that I told her that I gave her, that the, the council Um, it's thirty days that I told her that I gave her has got the, the council was looking at that date and we would get her the agenda as soon as possible, so we would need to get prepared to pay. And that's the day you choose.
So we're already past the thirty, we're already into the thirty that day and they're okay with that? That's all I have, Chairman.
Councilman Waller.
It's in your butt. I've got to say, we're not going to change our spots that quick. Believe me, I've been to Washington enough to know that.
How many meetings that we've had like this?
I'm not going to make a comment.
It's always the same.
Fourteenth?
I like this.
Not fourteenth, that's good for me.
Councilman, fourteen? Fourteen? What, what? Councilman? Fourteen? Is that good?
Councilman Redco has got another comment.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just tailoring off what Councilman Waller said, that this has been going on for a while. It's in October fourth, two thousand and eleven agreement, the settlement agreement, this is part of that equation. I agree with Councilman Revar, we're going up there for a purpose to get a handle on these regulations that's been pretty much killing this whole reservation. So, you know, we need to take a, what we find out in DC, we need to be able to communicate that to our trustee, the phone, whenever that is. And I'm, I'm kind of questioning too, is that we got enough time once we come back? If we're going to be successful? I'm hearing that this administration in DC wants to produce, wants to drill, baby drill. I'm in favor of that. If we could carve out our activity and get moving in this reservation, that's not been since, like you said, Mr. Waller, they've been hitting us with everything in the kitchen saying. And now it might be relaxing, and if it is, I think we ought to jump through that opening quickly and see if we can get in there and start drilling. And what's that going to look like? There's three things that are, in my view, the data that's, you know, setting in over there and we can't get our hands on, producers cannot, that's an issue. The other thing is a categorical exclusion that's been hammered on since all this meeting with, in two thousand and eleven, this agreement and that, that part is part of that, this biennial meeting is part of that, that the lawsuit, so, I mean, that's why they're carrying on them. We still see the same folks in here. We even went to court, we still see the same folks. So the last thing is those regulations. You saw it the last time, that thing was three inches thick and grown. And I read through, we sat in here with Councilman Revar, myself, I think there was another councilman, and went through that thing and redlined it. They asked us too, we redlined it, we handed, I don't think they considered one thing. We sent it to our attorney too, so, you know, that's all been going on. We've been focusing for a while. I think it's, it's imperative, we go to DC, we tell them we want to, if it's possible, let's get back to business here in the reservation. And we OSHs, we got a good history. I think we do it better than the state of Oklahoma, and that's what I'm prepared to tell DC. We as OSHs can handle this whole reservation, if we can do it ourselves, and we're, we've got the talent and the know-how to, to make this reservation happen. You know, I know the state wants to do this and that, I know everybody else wants to get in our business, but it's time we, we, we start grabbing a hold of what we can and start moving. So I'm, I'm in agreement, if we're okay with the fourteenth, Councilman Revar said, we got enough time to come back. Does that, do you think that's enough time, Raleigh, to come back and, and meet with our solicitor and tell them what we found in DC?
Councilman, it will be quick, but I think what I would say is that it'll be, it'll be enough time to give them a heads up of what we heard and where we're going.
Okay.
And you know, these, these things, they go on and on and on.
Oh, really?
So we, we, we will continue to press.
I'm sorry, you got it.
Thank you, Chair.
I think too, that just jump, we get back the next week, we just jump right into it and it'll be fresh on their minds.
Fresh on their mind anyway.
Service, entertain the motion. These open items that I wrote here are the open discussion items. This agenda is available for any of the input after you get home to direct it, the questions to it under the choice of the chairman. Let's just get them down here, you know, they're going to placate us. The other item I have is that if we have dealt with this since twenty fourteen, what possibly you think they're going to do in a month? I just say, let's just get them here, bait them, bring them in, then fill the trip.
Okay.
We need a motion to add?
I would like to make that a motion.
Get that, need a second. Need a second.
I'm getting too old to back on.
End discussion. Very done, open the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redco?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Revar? Councilman Revar? Councilman Chappert? Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all.
Thank you, later. Next on any new business is a request for building, Councilman Redco, you got it?
Chair, kind of going in the same vein of what I've been saying in the previous seven A, the electoral committee, to kind of grab a hold of where we are today as a mineral council, representatives and including our OSH headright holders. I understand, we've been told that we could possibly consider the east or the south side of the building that might be opening up, is that all right? So then I've heard in the past that this building was purchased by the OSH headright holders. Kind of checking that out, I don't know if, you know, I'd like to find out. But I think it'd be in our, in our future, that we go ahead, take this building, including, you know, the, the building, the, the, the well records that are in this, all this information out here that, that belongs to our headright holders in my view, kept by the trustee or United States, that we go ahead and just claim this building. I'm not going to ask for a reservation, a resolution today, but I, I'd like to get the feedback from the council that, you know, we, we go ahead and say this is our building. And whatever it takes to maintain it, we do that. And, you know, we need, we need to start looking toward what's that going to look like? You know, what kind of people do we need to start doing these things on our reservation, oil and gas wise, mineral wise? So that's all kind of the same thing. So anyway, thank you, Chair, just want some questions, but I'm not going to ask for a resolution today, I just want some feedback. Thank you.
Captain Waller?
Yes, sir, under the general, United States contract that built the building, we signed off on it on the tribal council, thirtieth, I believe, before two thousand. And that's exactly what Councilman and I have been discussing on the ownership of the property, I'm in full support of that statement.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's my understanding that we have a deed to this reservation from the charities, and this is real estate. I think that, I'd like for somebody to present a deed where we needed this out away from us. As far as I'm concerned, from what I know about title in real estate, verbal, verbal transfers are not recognized. And I, I, to my knowledge, there is no deed out, you know, away from us, the OSH tribal entities to any other entity. So I think this, I don't know why all this property is already ours. I think it's a question for our legal counsel. And maybe not in this setting, maybe, maybe we do a little research and it will come out in.
No, keep going, sorry.
I'm not going to get out there any further on the limb than I do.
Oh, you're out there. But I have some support with you, I'm sitting with some of these other committee members. That property effort that this man just spoke about is exactly correct. What, what is the meaning of a sovereign dealing? You have to use us as your only sovereign. And I can tell you that because I've been on three councils that supported the top battle for a tribe against all covers. And I'll leave it until I get mad heavy.
Well, I just know that some of our parents, and mine was one of them, sat in the same room.
Right here.
Sat in the same very room, and then back when, when he did, he was representing the tribal council and representing the headright holders on the tribal council. And it's my understanding that this building belonged to, belonged to the headright holders at that time, that maybe our legal counsel can, can do a little research on that and advise us.
We were paying for it. He was my first boss, this council.
I know what they had there. They had the eighteen eighty-nine, eighteen ninety-three land runs, everything west of OSH County, OSH reservation. That was OSH reservation. And they had a land run in nineteen ninety-three and they went all the way to Panhandle, but it didn't include the reservation. So that tells you right there that we, we all agree with that. Anyway, anybody else?
Well, one more comment, and it was brought up earlier today about the Rainbow Yard, that this council, well, actually, OSH, yeah, I think it was this council that finally inked the deal, located that property, used funds that we were given by the United States Congress on two different settings, one under mineral council three and the other under mineral council four, that we had roughly four and a half million dollars. And we found this building, used those funds to purchase it, but we weren't allowed to put that in our name. And so I think it falls along that same question as, as can we not own, can we not own property? And so I just wanted to share that, in that one acre yard is, is, is an example of not being able to. And I don't know under what law or what statute that prevents us from owning property, but it's something that we should certainly look at.
Councilwoman Revar.
I see no reason why we can't own any property. I think that the possibility of having ownership of that yard was taken away from us by the lady that was head of ninety-three, six, thirty-eight over there. It was her decision to take it. I don't know if anybody else had anything to do with it or not, but unless you have an attorney that's aggressive enough to protect your interests at all levels, they're going to keep doing to you whatever they're doing. We've been cannibalized by the OSH nation. I said that twenty fourteen when I ran. That's our biggest predator is the OSH nation. And you all are just now seeing it. We keep having this smoke blown up our skirts.
All about yourself.
I'm trying to be nice about it.
I know, but I didn't breathe nice.
Well, anyway, I'm just saying.
Anybody else? Councilman Redco.
Thank you, Chair. At this point, I don't want to point any fingers, I just want to ask a question, a simple question. I'm, I'm a representative of folks that are held under trust, under the Bureau of Indian Affairs. It's a big decision, it's a federal decision, and that's their responsibility. And we got our responsibility, so we're supposed to make sure that relationship stays fine. I'm not saying this person or that person, I'm saying, you know, I always say that the most powerful thing we can do as OSHs is, you know, be OSHs, put that blanket on and ask, go up to the United States and say, here's, we think something's going on, is it right? If it is what you want, then let's back off and we'll sit down. Or, no, it's not right, but you know, that's what I'm saying, and, and the end result, and this, this is what's driving my decisions. I get our headright holders calling me, they cannot make their bills. And they're setting on a huge trust asset, and it hurts. It hurts when our OSH headright holders call their, their representatives, you know, what's going on? Because I cannot pay my bills from one payment to the next. I used to could, I can't now. What am I going to do? You know, that's a big, that's where a lot of them are today. Wouldn't bother, I mean, I would say wouldn't bother, it bothers me that we're setting on a trust that belong, in my view, belongs to them. And, you know, we need to, we need to ask the question, all right, I, if I, if I'm wrong, I'll say sorry for, for taking your time. But in my, you know, I, I'm asking as a, as a guarded OSH, voted in by people that said, this has put me in this spot, I'm going to say, I'm going to go to DC, I'm going to say it. I'm just going to tell them what I think, because I think that's, we're supposed to. So anyway, Chairman, thank you, but I, I want to just ask the question, you know, why are our payments down? Let's get busy. I've, I've been guilty of it, I've tried this, I've tried that, LLCs, nonprofits, trying to get some of our properties moving. It's clear to me, clear that the constituency are scared. I mean, not scared, but concerned, they'd rather sit at home and not make all this money because they want to protect their trust. That's all I've been hearing. I've, I've heard one that says, no, you got to do it a certain other, different way, okay. But I did tell this individual, I said, you're the only one I've heard say that. I've heard a mountain of people say no, you know? And it kind of reminds me of how I was raised, you know, you don't, you don't hand over your property to anybody else. You stand, you know, that's how we were raised. We're all here, so this trust means a lot to all these, all of our OSH people, it means a lot to them. That's a lot to do with this list that we read, you know, these are all shareholders that pass on them, they're, they're precious to us. So I don't want to bring them along, but. I'll stop.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
He has got shit in him.
I was glad I did.
New business, drug keeper donation, I like, there's an audience out here, I want to kind of give a little history, there's a lot of them, when you say drug keepers, they don't, they don't have enough clue what we're talking about. And there's a lot of people that haven't been around here, with the history of it as, the history of it is, we bought this land from the charities in eighteen seventy, eighteen seventy-one, way back there. And our people came down here and they said they were lost, they, they lost a lot of people coming down here, almost like the Trail of Tears, you know? And they were, they were kind of in mourning, is what our people told us and my folks, my uncle, my aunt and everybody. When they got here, they were kind of lost and mourning too, I would imagine too. And the call people, who we call Conza, Kansas people, they came down and they gave us a drum and Wacapalay, that's, 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 that's area people, the Pahuska people, they felt sorry for us and they gave us a drum and said, we want you to enjoy yourselves and dance. They call it, it's called the dance of the oldest son, the oldest son, and everybody, I was the youngest son, so I didn't, I didn't get a, get a part of that. So the oldest son, it's his dance and, and he has a committee and he has that drum. And there's three, there's three different sets of OSHs, there were more than that at one time. But we evolved into three districts, and this Wacapalay and there was Fosoli over there, and Fairfax, and there was the Hominy people, they called them the lowland people, Hominy folks, that's what they called them. They were called Zanzoli, Zanzoli people. And, uh, and every one of us had a drum, the Bonka people gave the drums to the Greyhorse people, the Posole people, and I believe they give it to Hominy too, is that, is that correct?
No, we got the same as you did.
Okay. That's how it works, and then when we give a donation to the, they have a.
Brought to my home, I know.
They have a dance every year in June, and, uh, it's coming up pretty quick, and we give a donation to the.
No, but it was brought to Henry Brown.
So if you all don't know what we're talking about, you know now. Okay, uh, five thousand dollars for each district, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Chair.
Second?
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Erwin?
Not just 'cause we have it this year, but.
Five thousand dollars for each, each district. Any discussion?
Just the simple fact that, you know, their electricity bills out here, this is years ago, rent at least a thousand dollars a day. That don't count on the money they need to feed people at the main camp. You know, there's a lot of expenses, they're cleaning up the, the, uh, the camp, you know, so yeah, they need it.
We've already started.
Yeah, we need to make sure that they keep that going, that's, that's what we're part of.
We haven't got the bench worship, that's next.
Harry Dunn, call for the vote.
Second Chair, Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, ladies, thank you, council. Go in executive session.
Take a break.
Take a break first.
Make the motion.
Make a motion, sir, to go in executive session.
Sorry. Talking about Councilman, any discussion? Harry Dunn, call for the vote.
Councilwoman Erwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishawala?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Should be here any minute, they want to go ahead.
Thank you, ten minute break, thank you, business, being here.
Chairman, I just wanna put on some of your information, excuse me, dear, I'm talking. October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, we handed that check over, paid for that yard.